Are you in tomorrow?
I have meetings from eight, two, and three.
Good to know.
So the rest of town's doing okay last week?
Okay, we're gonna call the board of selectmen's meeting of August 21st, 2019. Any reason for non-public?
Uh, yes, we do RSA 91A, 013, Roman numeral 2, or case A, hiring.
Okay.
Can I also have something on litigation?
On what?
Litigation?
Yep.
And we also have to go over our minutes.
Yeah, that was what I was gonna say, too. We also have a few non-public minutes to deal with. Okay, consideration of minutes of August 7th.
I have a comment, Mr. Chairman, page 13. Uh, just to clean up, uh, it's underneath the paragraph Chairman Sunakel stated a regular meeting, and then we have three, uh, subsequent paragraphs. Two of them have $1,840, and the last one is $18,400. I think the right number is $18,400, so if we could just get that changed, that would be great. That's all I have.
That's all?
Yes, sir.
Okay, anybody else? Motion to approve the minutes?
They're moved.
Second?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Yeah. Public hearings, there's been a, the public hearing that was originally scheduled for the unanticipated funds over $10,000 will be coming up at another date. The wrong date was, uh, put on the public hearing of the 22nd, not the 21st, so that will not be happening tonight. The public hearing, temporary event permit, Wolfboro Area Chamber of Commerce to host community events to celebrate Christmas in Wolfboro from November 30, 2019, to December 24th, 2019, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Hi, Mary DeFries, and this event will be put on much like previous years. It will kick off with the Christmas in Wolfboro Parade the Saturday after Thanksgiving, and the tree lighting ceremony of the community Christmas tree will be held then, and right after the tree is lit, Santa Claus, who travels in the parade, will then stroll up to Santa's hut located on Main Street at Town and Cape Park, and he'll open his hut for visiting hours on that Saturday after Thanksgiving, and then, uh, we'll make sure that Santa is in Wolfboro throughout the month-long event, which also includes Breakfast with Santa and Christmas Spirit Open House, where, um, the businesses kindly fundraise for Life Ministries Food Pantry during that event.
Hey, anybody have any questions? Thank you. Somebody like to make a motion?
Insurance certificate, Mary.
I'm sorry?
There's, on the back, there is one.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve a temporary event permit application for Wolfboro Area Chamber of Commerce to host community events to celebrate Christmas in Wolfboro from November 30th, 2019, to December 24th, 2019, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Second? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Next, uh, event permit is the Wolfboro Area Chamber of Commerce to host fireworks at Brewster Beach, launched over Wolfboro Bay to celebrate New Year's Eve on December 31st, 2019, at 6:30 PM.
So, uh, the fireworks over Wolfboro Bay are, and just a continuing, continued, excuse me, effort to keep our residents and visitors here while they celebrate New Year's Eve, and to complement the, um, Town of Wolfboro Special Events Committee's plans for December 31st. And if I could please just clarify that the fireworks will be launched off of property of Brewster Academy, but not from Brewster Beach, will be on the shoreline of Brewster Academy. And if I could respectfully ask, which I did not submit with the, uh, temporary event permit and only just noticed, so, and I apologize, but if you are able to consider adding a rain date of January 1st, we do have that in our contract that we signed with the, um, uh, fireworks company.
The rain date will be January 1st?
2020.
How about a snow date, too?
Hopefully, we can see the fireworks through the snow. It's just when it gets cloudy with the rain that's a challenge.
Okay, somebody wanna make a motion?
I'd like to make a comment, and I want to thank the chamber for putting on the fireworks. Um, it's one less thing that last night Wolfboro Special Event Committee has to come up with, and we greatly appreciate it, so thank you to the chamber.
Bravo.
So would you like to make a motion?
I will. I'll make a motion to approve the temporary event permit application for the Wolfboro Chamber of Commerce to host fireworks at Brewster Academy to celebrate New Year's Eve on December 31st at 6:30 PM with a rain date of July, I mean, of January 1st. That's July.
Wishful thinking.
Yeah, we wish.
I'll second that. Any other comment? Hey, alls in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you, Mary.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mary.
And next public hearing is the Calvary Wolfboro to host kids' games on August 22nd, 2019, at 5:00 to 9:00 PM, and August 23rd, 2019, from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Um, my name is Philip Marbury. I'm here on behalf of Calvary Wolfboro, and we're just excited. This will be our third annual Wolfboro Kids' Games that we're able to host. Um, and, uh, very much like in years past, it's an event that starts Thursday night and continues on into an all-day event Friday starting at 9:00 AM, ending technically at 9:00 PM, although in reality, it ends a little bit sooner than that, as most of the kids are pretty exhausted and the, the families are ready to head home for the evening. Um, but it's, it's just, it's an all-day event that's really focused around the kids of this community and just giving them something exceptional and unusual to do, um, that's, that's about, you know, team building and team activities. We've got an incredible obstacle course that every year we add a new element to. Um, this year, we've added another element in our, in the docks on the property, that they're gonna get to tow a raft across between the two docks, um, and it's just, it's, it's one of those events that, um, is incredible to see come together, and it, and it requires a volunteer staff of, of about 50 people every year, um, who just joyfully do it, because the look on these kids' faces, they're just running all over that property, is, is really a priceless thing, and so we're excited to be doing it for the third year in a row.
Do you have any comments? Somebody like to make a motion?
Move to approve the temporary event application to Calvary Wolfboro to host kids' games on August 22, 2019, at 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and August 23rd, 2019, from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
A second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board.
On our next, uh, part of our agenda is the weekly manifest. This is our bulk vote and to cut. And that's all we have for that this week.
I'll make a motion that we accept the bulk vote.
Second?
Hey, alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next on our agenda is board appointments. Jim, you wanna, you gonna deal with that, or you want me to, or what do you want?
Oh, you can.
Okay. Uh, Jean Denault, resignation from the Wolfboro Heritage Commission. I think she's been on there quite a while, too. Hmm? Yeah. Hey, somebody wanna make a motion to accept her resignation?
They're moved.
Second?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Ron Ronzetti, move from alternate position to member position on the Heritage Commission. I'll make a motion to move, uh, Ron Ronzetti up to a member, and do you know for how long?
March of 2021.
March 2021? Okay. All right.
I'll second that.
Okay, alls in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you'll take care of notifying him of that. Okay, next on our agenda is the Wolfboro Masonic Temple Association, a follow-up. I would like to make a motion that we table this to another meeting. The reason for this, I had some discussion with the town manager, and we feel that we need to get some more direction from our town assessor directly, which we have not been able to, so I would make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I think out of what we would, what I would like to do is to talk to him directly about ramifications of what we might wanna do, so, alls in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. We will be in touch with you as far as another date. Lakes Region Model Railroad Museum lease discussion.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. About three years ago, when the concept of the Model Railroad Museum was first discussed, we talked to the town manager about the use of the freight shed, and the question was, what will the future of the freight shed be? Uh, the town had just bought it and was not prepared to put any funds, further funds into it, and so we came up with the suggestion that if we were to raise the funds to preserve the shed, rehabilitate it, and make it useful for public use, then, uh, and we would be prepared to do that in exchange for a lease from, for the model railroad to use the museum. And the concept was that the quid pro quo was, we'll raise the funds if we get to use the museum rent-free for a period of time. And so, as it has evolved, the Model Railroad Museum is raising about $350,000 of private money, not including the town allocation, to restore a town-owned property that presumably will be a useful property for the next hundred years, hopefully beyond, but it will become a town-owned property that is ADA compliant and can be used for a variety of, uh, of future activities. We are prepared to put the monies in, in exchange for relief on the costs of doing so. Uh, if we do not get those reliefs, then, of course, uh, commercial, uh, properties elsewhere, we have looked at those, and there are opportunities, there are possibilities, but they're expensive and they're also not well situated. The freight shed is a perfect place to have a model railroad museum that appeals to the public. So, the proposal is that if we put in the $350,000 to a town-owned property, will the town give us an equivalent rate on, uh, on the expenses? And we are proposing a dollaria for rent and that the town cover the cost of utilities. We will cover the cost of everything associated with the internal museum, and at the end of the time that the museum, uh, is in the shed, the town will then own a beautifully restored ADA-compliant space for whatever future use you have, at no further cost to the town. So, in exchange for the $350,000 of private monies that we are bringing to the table, this is our request, uh, for the, to, to restore the balance. So, I gave you a, a sheet that lays out the sources of the funds, where they're coming from. We have organized $130,000 from ELCHA. We have organized, um, uh, we are starting the private fundraising, and that is underway and proceeding well, uh, and at the end of that, you will, you will have a perfectly useful town building at no further cost to you. And so that is my request. Uh, we have modeled the lease on similar leases. Uh, we have not run it by our attorney, because it's my belief that we should arrive at a business agreement before we get the attorneys involved. Their job is to make whatever we agree legally acceptable. So, my request to you is for agreement and principle with the, uh, the terms of the leases we have proposed.
I'm sure some people here may have some questions. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a bunch. I'll wait.
I'm good.
First one that comes to mind is, have we done anything like this in the past on leaving the rents and stuff in exchange for having the building renovated for us and stuff?
Only ones I know of are public buildings renovated with private funds, but the town is running the programs within the facility, and this is different. We're gonna renovate a building, and we're gonna have a nonprofit running.
Also, I think that we could renovate it, make it ADA compliant, right now for a heck of lot, less than $375,000.
I have, I have some questions, John. Um, I apologize, I'm a...
Pull your mic down.
You know, I was...
Yep.
I've only been on the board a year and a half, and my first question is, this is draft number five, um, of the proposed lease. Who have you been negotiating with?
We, I, I was talking to Dave Owen, and Dave took the draft and submitted it to the town attorney. The town attorney reviewed it and essentially said this is a pretty standard-looking lease, except for the request for, um, relief on the rent and the utilities, but the other, the other terms seem to be reasonably straightforward. I have copies of his comments and the earlier drafts, if you would like to see them.
So four drafts, um, of this document went back and forth between you, your, your attorney, and Mr. Owen, but nobody else?
Between me, Dave Owen, and the town attorney, and I think there were two drafts. There may have been another one, another two that we generated that my board reviewed.
Well, and the reason I, I just bring it up, it says on your document, it says draft number five.
Correct, correct.
So my first, you know, I've only been here a year and a half. I've never seen a piece of paper relating to a lease, so you've answered that question, and I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Um, so just a couple of things for me, and for the public, so we can catch up.
The board of directors, too?
Is the, is the list of the board of directors that you have on your flyer, is that a current list?
Yes.
Okay, are there any additions to that list?
No, no, no.
No.
Okay. And is there a tax ID number associated with your, with your entity?
Yes.
Okay, and we have that in town?
I'm, I think I have, I've been glad to submit it. I don't have it with me.
Okay, and the reason I'm doing this, I wanna kind of, you know, just make sure we, we, we run this according to HOIL.
Right.
And, and you have a bank account, I presume?
Yes, we do.
And the bank account is where donations and fundraising proceeds are being placed?
Correct.
Okay, setting aside the $95,000 that the town appropriated two years ago, was it 17 Warren article?
Yes.
Um, that bank account should have in it how much? Roughly?
It has in it about, um, six, $7,000.
Okay.
Most of the monies that we have raised are in the form of pledges that are payable when we receive, when we reach the 155.
Okay.
And that's what I'm encouraging people to do.
And so from, you know, from my selfish point of view, uh, it's, you know, when we, when we look, I'm, I'm looking at a bank account, because our voters are gonna have to figure out where, you know, what the proceeds are that we're working with, so that would be a thing for, for me. So, you, you, did, is, is, you have an attorney, and your, was your attorney talking to, uh, our, our town attorney?
No, not yet.
Okay, and who is, is your attorney local?
It will be Roger Murray. I mean, he has been our attorney all along, and I see no reason why I shouldn't submit this to him for his review.
I'll make a statement now. I don't, had no idea.
Okay.
Um, that, that Roger's gonna represent you as an attorney.
Okay.
Because if I did, I would've stepped down.
Oh, I understand.
Because I had questions, surprise to me. I thought he was trying to retire.
We will find...
Just let big people go.
And for the voters out there, for the folks out there, that wasn't the purpose of my question. I wanna make sure that, you know, when we start the process of having these conversations, that, uh, because the last question I'm gonna ask is our town manager, is how much, how much have we spent already, uh, on, on things? I wanna make sure we have an efficient negotiating process. Now, inside your lease, or the proposal, this document that is being proposed, and consistent with another Warren article that, that, you know, gave you all an extension from calendar year 18 to calendar year 21 to raise your proceeds.
Right.
The way I read your document, it says to me, and I, you know, again, I'm just reading what I read, it says to me that you want the lease to begin at the moment in time that a certificate of occupancy is provided to the museum. At this time, we don't know when that is. It could be, and I'm just, I'm, I'm being hypothetical here, but I'm just playing a hypothetical, it could be that you raise the funds and, and get it all done by 2021, in which we'll all be very happy, but it'll take, you know, let's assume another two years, so the 10-year clock would start in two years hence from that. Let's assume we had two years, so it would be 2023 forward, okay, or 10 years. Is, is that fair? Is that what you had in the document, kind of 10 years once you get the CO?
In principle, right.
Yeah, okay.
But in practice, we would be very disappointed if we don't have the project ready for the museum to move in the end of 2021.
So that leads me to my next question. If, if we were to enter into an agreement now, the way I read the document, uh, there's no provision in the document that says if there is no, and it's, I hate to focus on the bad stuff, but if there is no ability for you to raise those funds, then, then what obligation do we have, or what, what continuing obligation do we have to you? Is the lease null and void at that time?
I believe so.
It, and in this document, I couldn't find that language, and I'm not, and, you know, we might wanna insert something like that.
Right, I understand, and I think that's a good point.
The questions I have for Mr. Pinio, and not for here, because this would, and it's not meant to catch anybody off-guard, is, how much have we spent on lawyer fees for this project, or fees, period, for this project? And the second is, has the town seen and reviewed and reached comfort level with the projected costs that you have for the project? I, I haven't been a party to this, but I think, you know, you're, you're looking at raising a big slug of money.
Right.
And are we comfortable that the big slug of money you raise is gonna be enough to get the job done? And I don't know the answer to that, and maybe at some point, um...
We haven't, we have not sat down with you and gone through the costs in detail.
Right.
We have had others review the costs and validate them for us, but I'm happy to do that. Um, I think Dave Ford gets, has an understanding of the magnitude.
Yeah.
And the overall picture, but be happy to sit with whoever you wish and...
And I think for the benefit of all parties, the voters and everybody, we need to know, and I, we're gonna have this with a couple of other things, we need to know how much money is, is, is it, is gonna take to get this job done, because what we would, what we never wanna do is say, we, we didn't get clarity at that level, we're coming back to you for more money. Okay, or you have a problem trying to operate.
That's very true.
I'm, I'm done with my questions. I, I, I'm not comfortable, uh, negotiating this lease until, my personal opinion would be, until John and his team have a substantial amount of money in the bank, and that we have clarity around, uh, uh, you know, the operating or the balance. That's, I would kinda say, until you have more than $6,000 in the bank, and probably 80%, I'll make it a number up, 80% of your $385,000, uh, I would not be comfortable entering into a lease at this time.
Well, I, I understand and appreciate it, but there's a bit of a chicken-and-egg situation here, because, uh, we are representing to the investors the economic projections for the museum, and we are projecting break-even in the third year.
Mm-hmm.
And this assumes a certain budgetary, you know, the, the budget for the first five years of the museum going out, and part of that, of course, is, uh, the relief on the rent and the relief on the utilities that we're requesting, and so, we're making representations. We're certainly, we're, we're, we're not saying that there is any agreement, but we're saying that negotiations are underway, and this is our goal, and that's the extent that we are projecting, but funders need to know what the, exactly the same things that you need to know, looking forward. They need comfort in the economic projections, and this is why I'm, I'm starting this conversation with you now. We don't need to come to an agreement now, but, um, and certainly we don't need to execute a lease now, but we do need to have, you know, an understanding of what the, the general terms should be.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have a couple, and I go back to reading Warren Article 22, and, um, of the 2000 and 27 Warren article, and it says renovation of the old freight house building, and the expenditure of the $95,000 shall be contingent upon the receipt by the town of the balance of funds currently between, uh, 200,000 and 250,000 for the total cost of the project in the range of 300,000 and 350,000. So to me, it sounds like, and this is what we did with Abenaki, not until the money for the whole project has been raised, and that's the stuff of the train, are we given permission by this Warren article to release any town funds, and that's not what I understood in here. My understanding, you wanted us to release the funds in phase one.
At the end of phase one and two combined.
Yeah.
Okay, it would be nice to have them released at phase one, but...
You can't do that.
I don't think with this Warren article, we'd have to put out another Warren article. This says until the whole project, you've raised the money, and that's what we did with Abenaki, so...
Okay.
If that's gonna be the case, I would expect to have to have another Warren article from the voters, because that's where we get our approval from, and the way I read it, it says not until you raised every penny can we move forward.
I, I, I don't have the language in front of me, but my recollection is that the project is the rehabilitation of the freight shed and the provision of ADA access.
That's not what it reads. It says require renovation to the building for the use as a public museum and private donation raised by the Lakes Region Model Railroad, um, a nonprofit. The Warren article shall be null and void, um, if the Warren article for the lease.
Right, right.
So you can, you can have this. I, I brought it out and printed it, so that's my first...
I do have it, yes.
My first concern. The other thing on the back of this...
I appreciate your editing, and I've caught that, and thank you very much.
That is, that is an error, and going to the utilities, I have no trouble with the rent, but I do have trouble with the utilities.
Yeah.
We would be committing ourselves to paying the cost of utilities with no control over how those utilities were being used. You could let a toilet run, you could leave lights on, and so, in a, and if I look at what we've done with other rental properties, usually the tenant pays the utility for the running.
Yes.
So where I am right now, I couldn't support the utility part. I couldn't put the taxpayer with the burden of a cost that I have no way of regulating or controlling.
Would you entertain utilities with a cap?
I'd have to think about that.
We're not negotiating.
The way it's written here, absolutely no.
If you look at this, uh, this page, John, that you had in the packet, number four says, "We estimate rent of $1,000 a month, utility costs, electric, water, sewer, security monitoring at $400 a month, totaling $1,400 per month, or $16,000..." dollars per month, or sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars a year, or a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars for each ten years of the lease."
Yes.
So I think to answer the kind of Linda's question a little bit, in here, it's stating that these are estimates, obviously.
Correct.
But they're written down here, and it does spread it out over a ten-year period. I, I kind of agree with Linda that, you know, utility costs are what can fluctuate more than anything. So I'm not ready to throw those in at this point.
Okay.
Personally.
All right.
Okay? The rent, that's a little different. We can maybe work on that some, but I, I'm not ready to give up a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars altogether over ten years.
By the headway.
Utilities are going to change too over the ten-year period. I mean, electric costs are going to go up, as we know. Water and sewer costs are going to go up. So over a ten-year period, that could be a substantial amount of money. So I just do not be on the hook for that right now.
Okay. Well, as I suggested to Linda, would you entertain a cap on that?
Well, again.
The hundred and sixty.
Bring some, bring some numbers. These numbers are written right down here, and they're written by you, so, or your group, okay?
Maybe.
Um, so I'm willing to listen, but when you put numbers out like this, these seem relatively reasonable, certainly, but.
Okay.
It's something, as Linda said, that.
I just can't.
I'm, I'm not comfortable right now with it.
Also, I think to be fair, if the Wright Museum or Boat Museum said, "Will the town pay our sewer electricity and water?" Uh, you know, "Why are you paying this other private museum and not us?" I think that, that would be a, a threat to us. And also, this puts us, in my opinion, in running a museum, which we're already running the Libby, which is, which costs hundreds of thousands of dollars. And we love the Libby, but a lot of headaches, and I don't know that we need another headache.
I, yes, please. So I'm going to be, I'm going to be brutally unfair, but what you, what you represented here is that you're, you're having conversations with investors. That's good. You, you're telling your investors there's a three-year break even plan, but that's all predicated upon a subsidy from the town for rent and for utilities. That's, that's what I heard you say.
Correct.
That says to me, as just a, a number guy, that your business plan doesn't work. And your, your, your break even period either has to go out further, five years, whatever the number is, or, um, you know, you're going to convince, you know, this body to subsidize your rent and your utilities. The town, I, I, I think, um, is, my personal opinion, the town is, subject to people agreeing to this, is saying, "Hey, listen, uh, we have a building that you're willing to fix up. Its value is in the eye of the beholder. It could be priceless. It could be worthless, but we think it's a, it's a, it's an artifact that we want to fix." We're, I think there's an attitude that says, "We want you to do, we want you to do something like that." So the dollar may be an okay thing to talk about. But subsidizing your business plan, I'm not sure beyond that is where I would go. And so I'm, I'm not prejudging where I'm going to vote, but it's going to be a long way for me to say, "Yep, let's, let's, let's throw in a subsidy for the, for the water, the electric, even with a cap." I, I'm not sure I'd go there. Your investors need to know that we really want this to be successful, but the three-year break even may need to go out further. So I don't want, I would not want to represent to the voters, and I'm comfortable with that right now.
Can I pose an alternative scenario, which would be a private investor, who, a private landlord who owns a building in this condition, wanting to rent it? That person would have to invest a significant sum of money in that building, and after doing that, is entitled to charge a market rent. We're doing the opposite. We're providing you with that investment to bring the building to a marketable condition, and in exchange for that, we would like relief. And so it's, it's similar to a, a normal commercial situation, except it's inverted. We're doing the renovation, and you're, you're giving us relief on the running expenses. The alternative would be for us to raise an endowment of three hundred and fifty thousand and then pay market rent, but you would have to re- renovate the building. And I think that there is no sentiment for you doing that. So this is the only way that I see.
Six parking lots.
And the only way that we saw three years ago to make this a viable project.
Understood.
And to rescue the building.
Right. Yeah. Um, John, a couple of things. Um, first of all, I think I agree with some of the comments of the board here. I'd have, not be interested in the utility part of it anyway and stuff, because those could fluctuate and stuff like that. And other comment is, your 501(c)(3), you must have, um, you know, financial statements, stuff like that, as to how the museum runs now. Is it?
Right.
Run, is it run now as a 501(c)(3) where it is now?
Oh, yeah. We are a 501(c)(3). We have been for the last three years of 501(c)(3).
So I would think, you know, the board would want to see, at least I would want to see those statements to see what the funding, what kind of money's come through the door, stuff like that on there, to see what your operating costs are.
Right.
Um, before we sit down and really have the discussion about the rent part of it and stuff, um, I think, because we do that with all our outside agencies to supply that information when they're asking us for money, which is kind of the same idea here. So.
Yeah.
Um, this is a much larger chunk than what we usually hear at the outside agencies, but, uh, that's kind of an opinion I would have. I'd like to see some financials and how this thing all runs now and stuff.
Right. Okay. I'd be happy to do that.
I see it a little differently. We're getting into a partnership with you. The taxpayers are going to be willing to put ninety-five thousand dollars into helping you renovate this building, um, which told the, told us that they were interested in it, but only to a point. And this is that fine line where we have to kind of start juggling, what will they and what will they not like us to do? What do we do for others? Usually when a 501(c)(3) raises funds for the town on a building, they give us the building. They give us whatever it is. Abenaki raised money for, uh, uh, snowmaking. That was all given over to the town. They no longer own it. They don't have anything. I'm fine with maintaining the building, but this is really that kind of a partnership. Um, and you're, and I don't see us, that we got into this to pay you back for the money you invested. Um, I'd have a real hard time paying for the utilities.
Also, a few feet away, we, the Chamber of Commerce pays us rent in a, in a public building. They pay utilities, uh, and they run their own thing. We do not pay the Chamber of Commerce. We do not give them any, correct me if I'm wrong, Mary, but you're sort of self-sufficient, aren't you? Correct. And that, that's a good model. We've gotten along the Chamber very well. The Chamber likes our facilities, and I would think your railroad museum would love our facilities because we, we're letting you use it, but as, as Linda and everybody else said, we're not, not in the museum partnership business.
Well, Dave, I'm hoping that you will not get into the museum business with us. We are, we completely separate from the town. If we fail, then we just take our tracks out of the building, and you have a perfectly usable ADA compliant building to use for whatever other purpose you want.
Well, remember, if you're not there, it could also be removed and create six parking lots. That was in our parking spaces. That was another alternative. We're, we're doing this, the taxpayers voted this to help you, but then you have to take it from there, as Linda said, unless there's some new warrant article that the taxpayers approve. And I like the idea of a railroad museum, just like I like the Wright Museum, but I, I really don't think the town taxpayers can forego revenue and give you free this and that beyond what the warrant article said.
I understand. I think that the Chamber of Commerce analogy, though, falls because they have not invested a third of a million dollars into that building. If they had, then I would accept your, your comparison, but we will be investing a third of a million of non-town money into a town-owned building.
Sure. I, I, I think Article twenty-two of 2017, the town warrant governs here.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, you know, all shorthanded, and Linda read it, all shorthanded. It says, "Town puts in ninety-five thousand. Uh, our intention is to, is to have you renovate the building, because we wanted you to be successful. The funds get released when the total project cost dollars are raised. Until that happens, I'm not sure there's anything else that I'm keen on doing. I, I do know that you're, you're here to talk about the rent, and at least this person on this end of the table is not, and the utility bills, I should say, this person on this end of the table is not, um, is not supporting that right now and probably won't." Um, so I think Article twenty-two of the 2017 warrant is, uh, is, is where we are, and I, I, unless we want to, unless we want to go against that, I'm.
Or we will.
Going against it.
Or if, if we feel that we'd like to release the ninety-five thousand after they have the money to rehab the building.
Yeah.
We could put in a new warrant article, but I can't do it on this warrant article, the way it's written.
And that was kind of why I was asking, do we really, you know, do we really know what the rehab cost? And if you say you've got it, that would be good information.
Yes.
I mean, right now, we're, we're kind of looking at your piece of paper and.
I understand.
Personally, I'm, I'm kind of picking it up and saying, "Is that a real number? Is that, can I, can I, can I find a bill of materials that tells me that's going to happen?" I mean, that may be a conversation, but at this point, I, I, I'm, I can't support what we're doing right now.
Okay. Is there any other discussion while John's here? It sounds to me like you probably need to go back and give us some other information and get it to Jim.
Okay.
And, uh, we'll work from there, but it sounds like, to me, this board is not willing to give up the utilities part of this lease. I think that all the other places we own pay rent. So what the rent is, I don't think we've totally established at this point, but I think that you get from this discussion that we're not willing to give up utilities over ten years.
Understood.
I don't think that's going to happen, John.
Okay.
I really don't.
Appreciate it.
So if you can come up with some other game plan that we can.
Will you pay for the hookup to the building?
I don't know what those are at this point, or what they will be when you go to hook it up.
Yeah.
There is water and sewer there, I know.
There is.
So that might be something to negotiate later, but I don't think the utilities themselves that we're ready to give up on that.
Shall I interact with the town manager?
Interact with Jim and get back to us, or he will, somebody will.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity.
Okay. Next on the agenda is discussion of Abenaki Twister Trail. Are you dealing with that, Matt?
Matt here.
I heard that Matt was going to deal with this.
I will deal with this. Um, I wanted to provide a, a letter of update to the selectmen on the Abenaki Trail expansion. You may remember that back in October of 2018, the Friends of Abenaki and also the Parks and Recreation Department was present for that meeting, uh, came to the selectmen and asked for authorization to expand the Twister Trail, which, as you look at the mountain, is obviously to the left-hand side. Uh, at that time, the selectmen took a vote to essentially authorize me to work with, uh, the stakeholders to get the trail expansion done. Uh, we've been working on that for about ten months now, and hopefully we're at a point where we feel comfortable executing. And the intent of my memo this evening is simply to provide sort of an update on that and a list of conditions that we're considering, should the construction begin really in the next, in the coming weeks. Uh, we don't want to hold off on the construction for too long as we get very close to the snowmaking and use season, so our, our intent is to begin as soon as possible. I'm happy to review the conditions in detail. You'll see that I provided eleven of them in total. These conditions have been shared with the folks that I've been interacting with, primarily Ann De Beer and Seth Castles, uh, who have been representing the Friends. Uh, we have been engaged in conversations with the Parks and Recreation Department about some concerns over, uh, operations and maintenance costs associated with this. Obviously, there may be a snowmaking need here. Uh, and while we do foresee some need to increase the budget in the future, you'll see that in the conditions that we've drafted here, there are no guarantees being made to the Friends as part of the 2019, or 2018, 2019, or 2019, 2020, rather, uh, season. We're going to analyze how this year goes with the trail expanded, and I think Christine and potentially the Friends will bring forward a proposal for either cost sharing or an increase to the Parks and Recreation budget, should we see a lot of success from this activity. I think for the benefit of the public, it actually might be wise for me to quickly walk through these conditions, one through eleven. I'll summarize what I've written here. Uh, condition number one is an important one, I think. We want to make sure that there's an opportunity for all of the folks who are working on the project, the Friends, the Parks and Recreation Department, and myself and potentially Dave Ford and the town manager, to have a pre-construction walk, just to review the site. Uh, I did have an opportunity to walk the site with Dave Ford back in early 2019, uh, and did map the site myself with GPS, just to get a sense of what the bounds of the trail were actually going to be. But we'd like an opportunity to revisit that as some adjustments have been made, and I'll explain that in just a few seconds here. Uh, so pre-construction meeting will be first. Uh, our, our understanding is that Integrity Earthwork will be performing the work. Uh, they are the contractor that's been involved on a few town projects as well, so we have a level of comfort with them. They will have, we have a tree clearing subcontractor work on the site, uh, but those are really the only contractors that we're approving at this time, and that's what I wanted to suggest to you. Any changes in contractors would have to be approved through the town, and if you're comfortable, I will be working with the town manager and Dave Ford to approve of those. There were concerns raised about the earthwork to be done at the site. Uh, if you go there, it's sort of a mix of rocks and roots and trees. There's, and there's a fair amount of earthwork that does need to be done. We do have a stormwater prevention plan that's been submitted to us, at least in a, in a general sense, and we recognize that the subcontractor and the contractor do have a sense of how to, to deal with any runoff or erosion that might occur. But beyond that, we've asked that they limit the, the, really the site work to removal of rocks only, and there'll be no blasting or stumping. So the stumps will not be removed from the site, which really would, uh, create some potential for erosion and runoff down, down gradient. So we've asked that they do, do not do that. Um, snowmaking on the trail is not being guaranteed at any time by the town of Wolfboro, simply because we have not, we don't have an operational budget approval for that to be done. Um, we recognize fully that in 2020, that may be supported by the board's selectmen and ultimately the voters, uh, but we don't want to make that guarantee to the Friends at this time without au- an authorization in place. Prior to work commencing, the contractor should obviously work with the Parks and Recreation Department to make sure that any activities that are happening at the Abenaki complex will not be interfered with. Uh, it could be something that the Parks and Recreation Department is doing, or even something like the Beer Fest. We want to make sure that any users of the facility are not being interrupted by the work that's being done. During the open season of Abenaki, uh, we did hear some concerns about the intersection of the proposed trail and the existing cross-country trails. Uh, we're actually engaged in active dialogue with the Cross Country Association as well about another matter, uh, but we have heard that the Friends of Abenaki meeting, there's been some positive interaction there, and the trail has actually been redesigned a bit to ensure that there aren't conflicts between the downhill skiers and the cross-country folks. Additionally, as I've noted here, there may be a need for a snow fence to be installed, particularly during the race sessions, uh, or the race training sessions, to ensure that higher-speed skiers are not intersecting with the slower or even high-speed moving cross-country skiers. That could be a potential conflict that may be a, a safety issue. So we want to make sure that measures are taken there. Um, as you may know, as you go up the hill, the Twister Trail is currently in pretty, pretty close proximity to the spray fields. Uh, you can actually see them directly adjacent to the existing trail clearing. There really won't be a lot of trail clearing further in that direction, but we want to make sure that anything that is done is coordinated with the Public Works Department, principally the, the Sewer Department, uh, because we don't want to have any tampering or any damage to the equipment that's out there. Additionally, uh, the one item that is noted here, uh, or maybe not noted in details, we do have monitoring wells on site, and we want to ensure that if any monitoring wells are disturbed in any way, which they shouldn't be, uh, but even if any cutting of monitoring wells that are coming up through the earth, that needs to be coordinated through the Public Works Department. It may be possible to actually cut some of the wells a little bit above where they're at right now, but that needs to be coordinated appropriately. Booking activities need to be, continue to be, uh, coordinated through the town of Wolfboro, and, and this is sort of an odd one, but there will be no priority given to any organization once this trail expansion is done. And I, I recognize this is a bit restrictive, but we want to make sure that even though the Friends are doing the work, that there's equitable access to the trail expansion that's done. There isn't going to be preferential treatment to any organization simply because of the way that the work's being done, uh, at least not at this point in time. Obviously, per normal, uh, requirements, we've asked the certificate of insurance to be provided to the town of Wolfboro for the contractor or any subs that are doing work there. We want to ensure that everyone's protected in what they're doing. Uh, we'll be provided with a weekly construction update. And just to be clear, we don't envision this taking a long time, partly because it's, it's for a, a firm like Integrity. They have a large crew that we think that we can get it done, they can get it done quickly. The other piece is just that there's, I don't think there's that really much work to be done. So we don't anticipate more than a few weeks of work, if that at all. Lastly, if there are any issues that are encountered, we do want to be notified immediately, and we've asked that multiple departments be notified in the event that someone does not get the notice. Uh, certainly the Parks and Recreation Department, but also, also Public Works and Planning, uh, need to be aware if any issues do arise. So this memo has been issued to the Friends. They're, I believe they're comfortable with the conditions that have been. I believe they're comfortable with the conditions that have been proposed here. We do have a few smaller issues to wrap up with, particularly the DES withdrawal limits. We just need to sign off that there are no issues there. And our pre-construction meeting may identify some other smaller issues that we need to address, but those hopefully will not cause any concern for the project. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Matt, for the update and everything. Just got a question on number three there about the earthwork, and I've got to take the rocks out with no blasting, which is good, but you also said no stump removal. And being a skier and stuff, if you're not taking the stumps out, or not putting snowmaking over there, and if you have a light snow cover winter, something like that, it's going to basically put that trail into a closed position, I would think, for the season.
So our expectation is that for some stumps, they may be ground, but not actually... So the stump top will not be above the ground. They may be ground down to the actual grade.
The roots will still be there.
Exactly.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Linda?
Yeah, I just want to thank Matt for doing this. We did agree on Twister. We passed it over to him, and I think he's covered most of the issues that I thought would arise. I'm glad that they have talked to the cross-country ski. I would like an update if there are issues up there. It comes out to the Board of Selectmen. I do have a concern about the parking. My grandkids are hockey players. I've been there when there's hardly any parking spaces, and I'd like to see us develop a parking plan. And if there is an event at Abenaki and there is one at Pop Whalen, how are we going to address it? Because I'm assuming this will be that there will be more ski races. This is going to expand that use. So I think we do need that. And I think that it would be good to have some kind of idea if this is going to expand and we're going to expand our operating costs. Are there any plans for fees? Because that's the other way we balance an increase in expenses with more revenue. And I would like to see, we're going to have more going, how you might address that.
Okay. So Linda, just to clarify that comment, you're basically saying if there is an increase in operational costs, how will that money be recouped through revenues? You'd like to see some justification for that. Is that correct?
Yeah, and look at some options of raising some more revenue.
Okay.
You know, I don't know if they charge for a skiing event. We don't have that breakdown, and that would be nice to know what they are charging for any of those. Paul?
Chairman?
Yes.
I agree with Linda. I mean, if we have costs, they should be recovered. Otherwise, the people who don't use the place pay the bill. So I'm kind of... Okay. I think this is great. I just... And I do have a kind of a... John Sims, you started it with the chicken/egg thing. If you build a trail and you don't put snow guns on it, and you've built a bridge to nowhere, and so is it going to come through in the operating side of budgeting that we are going to snowgun the trail? We're going to actually groom it?
I'll try to answer that question, and cover me if I'm not answering this correctly.
If the answer is you don't know yet, that's okay.
No, I think we know something. So what we do know is that they believe, they being the Parks and Recreation Department, I believe, I can speak for the conversations I've had with them, they believe that there may be the ability to do some snowmaking on the trail. Is that correct?
Yeah, so...
Yes.
One of some of the conversations which had occurred is, they will have the ability to perform snowmaking on that trail, but it's going to require more labor in moving hose over to get to the guns to be able to do it. It's not going to be pre-piped like it is today.
Right.
The other question, and that kind of hit on it, we're actively looking if there's any drawdown limits on that body of water to ensure that we don't put that...
Put the pond out to dry.
At risk, correct.
So you kind of got my thing. And I'm not suggesting we're doing this. Please, don't... I just don't want us to build a bridge, like down there in Boston, which just kind of goes and stops. And I think if we build it, we should follow through. We should make sure we have water, you know, to put down snow, groom it, all of that. And that should... And Linda's right. I mean, it should be a cost, and it has to be recovered.
And I don't necessarily believe we have to be able to cover the full expense, because we don't in Abenaki. We do a certain amount to provide recreation. And then, so I think we're about 50% in revenue. I need to check that. And that other time when I looked at it, Abenaki brought in X amount through its revenue, and the taxpayer paid... I kind of want to see that same kind of relation.
You'd love to see a spreadsheet.
Yeah.
And one clarifying comment, and I think this is clear, or maybe it's not, the Twister Trail exists today. So this is an expansion. It's not the creation of a brand-new trail. And they do, I believe, on some occasions, blow snow over on that trail. So there's snow coverage right now. The question is, is that going to increase? We're not making that guarantee for this year, but it is a good question.
I thought they were going to change the heads on the snowmaking so that they could go for...
Friends of Abenaki already look at that.
They are talking about that.
They're going to change some of the heads so they use less water and less air so that they can keep using the compressor they have and not have to buy a bigger one.
Yeah, they expect a great increase.
They are looking at that, and they are looking at more snowmaking over on the Twister Trail. That's all in the process right now of being...
And that's, I think, what we're kind of saying we need. That gives us some of the costs and some of the cost savings, so...
Right. And I guess my question, and I hate to ask the question, but for clarification, do you feel that information is necessary before construction begins?
No, I don't.
Okay. I just want to hear that before. You hear about work happening there, and you say we request...
I think the intent of this trail is to widen it a little bit more, so it makes it a little bit easier for some people to use. It's not necessarily, like you said, that trail is already there.
Yep.
They just want to widen it.
To race on it, yeah, to do race training. Okay.
I guess what I'm saying is I want some of those figures in the 2020 budget, even if they're just estimates.
Second, ma'am.
Okay.
You don't need to do that.
Oh, I do.
No.
Fortunately, I get to tell Christine that, I guess, so...
Well, we have some time, and the next thing we're going to deal with is our wonderful budget dates.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions on this?
Nope, for me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next is our confirm our 2020 budget review hearing dates.
Yeah, so you should have a...
This is always a very pleasant thing to do.
Hey, Dave, remember, we have to assign meal nights.
The what?
Meal nights. Who's going to bring dinner?
Yeah. That's later on, isn't it?
I think October 14th is Columbus Day.
Well, that's why we're here, Paul, so that you can tell us...
But it's Columbus Day.
Yeah. So when Amy put this draft together, we were having preliminary discussions. So the first date should actually be September 18th, not September 25th.
September what?
18th.
And again, these are all preliminary at this point.
Or 9th. So we're saying the 14th is Columbus Day, and we're kind of saying we don't want to meet on Columbus Day.
I'm not going to speak anymore.
Columbus Day is usually on a Monday, so the 14th is not a Monday, is it?
Yes, the 14th is a Monday.
Is it?
Yeah.
I don't know.
I got my calendar out.
Okay. But somebody does. It's usually the guy over here in the end.
It's the night of the 14th, so that's the end of the Columbus Day weekend. It's not interfering with it.
Well, depends upon where you are.
Yeah, it depends on whether you have company in it.
You are correct. That is Columbus Day.
So we probably ought to put a line through that one at this point.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, how about the other dates? Any conflicts? We're not into Thanksgiving yet, so... Yet. Okay. So we have... And we can always shorten up the board of selectmen's meeting if we need to. So this is just through October as far as...
I'm hoping by the time we get done with October, we're done with that budget.
So do we all agree that these dates, except for the 14th, we scratched out, starting on the 18th? That makes up for that one, that week we just scratched out. Right?
Well, it would mean that we were going to do the agencies on the 18th. Are we going to have a meeting on the 25th? The agencies are coming to our board meeting.
Yeah.
I think that's early for the department heads, the 25th of September.
That would be correct.
So we should scratch that whole date out.
Yeah, the date.
The 25th.
Agreed.
It would move to the 18th, right?
Correct.
Okay. So this will move up.
And so we'll have to use the 30th, if necessary, as one of our meetings.
Yeah, that's the way Amy had it scheduled, based on what it looked like historically and...
Number five.
Like it worked well.
Everybody agreeing on those dates at this point? I mean, obviously, we're going to... It could change depending on what's happening. Okay. Any other discussion about the dates? Amy will keep us informed on that.
Will.
Okay.
Linda mentioned you want to have food people or do that later?
Not yet, do we? We don't have food during this first session.
No, we don't the first one, but we usually, at some point, each of us take a night and bring in dinner. We would start on the 9th, if you would...
Okay, well, we've got a little bit of time to...
We'll do it at the next meeting, right?
Okay. All right, next on our agenda is other business.
Mr. Chairman, I have something I'd like to bring up. I got a call this afternoon from Mary DeVries informing me that she had heard from the Jet Ski Company, asking whether there was a possibility for them to stay in this space through the end of September. The Chamber's reads that they need to leave the building on Labor Day. That was done when the nursery school was there, and the nursery school needed to move furniture in. We have a business that's having people ask whether they can rent jet skis in September, and I am here to ask the boards to grant the Chamber approval to occupy that space through the end of September. And Mary's here if anybody would like to ask any questions.
I don't have any problem with that.
I move that we do that.
I'll second that.
Okay, we don't know what the motion is exactly.
A motion that we rent it to the end of September.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
That was a tough one.
Okay, any other business?
I mean...
Yeah, go ahead, Ben.
Dave had something he's... Talk about the Mount Washington?
If you want to.
At the request of the Economic Development Committee, we had a meeting on Tuesday about the ideas to get more people in the Wolfboro and to make them happier. And it came up that the Mount Washington motorship, they call it now, MS, comes into Wolfboro, and they do a lot for us, but we really didn't have any program to do anything for them. But by coincidence, I had made an arrangement to meet with Jim Marash, part-owner and captain, that day. And so I went there with my family and spent three hours, but about two hours with Jim Marash, his brother, the purser, and about six executives from Winnebago Sockee, the ship company, Winnebago Sockee Cruises. And they said that Wolfboro, they stop at Wolfboro, the capacity of the ship is 1,200 people. They stop at Wolf... People reserve their tickets in advance, and they say, what do I do to get on in Wolfboro? Where do I park? And they say, well, you have to park at Glendale Street. That's a long, long way from the dock. If you're old, you can't really make it. If you're handicapped, give it up. And so the people say, well, where else can we dock? So they don't dock at Wolfboro. So talking to them, about 5 to 10 times more people come on at the Weers than in Wolfboro. And they said if a cruise takes two and a half hours, if you had a three-hour parking space, we would get a lot more customers on the ship. And one of the problems this Town of Wolfboro had since at least 1947, when it's been in the minutes of the selectmen and in the newspaper, is parking. That's one problem that has never been solved by any master plans or any agreements. There were five proposals that we have parking meters, one of which was subjected to the voters. The voters voted it down. The main problem with parking, unlimited parking, is merchants park in front of their buildings or in front of their neighbors' buildings, or if they're real estate agents, they say, we have to park there with our clients, and other people have reasons. And so the customers lose. So a number of years ago, it was proposed to do a four-hour parking. And then it was brought up, Tripp Mcfield was part of this, and I was part of it too, that, well, then a merchant can then just has to move their car once, so it shouldn't be four hours. Then it went to two hours, they have to move it four times. I would like to propose and put on the agenda that we have a three-hour limit for next year for at least part of the downtown as a trial basis. That would also give someone who comes in on the Mount Washington and stays for two and a half hours a chance to have lunch, visit the proposed railroad museum if it's operating, Wright Museum, go shopping, take Molly to the trolley, and really enjoy Wolfboro. It would benefit the merchants. I have no dog in the fight. I don't own a retail business, and it doesn't make any difference to me how many come to Wolfboro. But I love Wolfboro, and I would think that a three-hour parking limit for at least part of downtown would be good for the... It would bring more people in the Mount Washington, in the Mount Washington would make more people go out in the Mount Washington, and would not only benefit the Mount Washington, but would benefit all of the commerce. It might even make possible for people to walk over to Clark Plaza. So as I see it, it's a win-win situation, and I would propose that we put it on the agenda sometime before the end of this season as a pass or no pass. And then if the board of selectmen passes it, maybe we have to have a hearing, that this be on a trial basis for next year, and then at the end of next year, it could be evaluated by Mary DeVries and the Chamber and everybody else. Did it work? It was good or wasn't? And if it isn't, we can go back to two hours, but I don't think we would lose anything. End of comment.
Okay. Did you hear that, Mr. Solomon?
I had just one thing, before we get into our committee reports. Talked about a little bit our community TV meeting this morning, and Timothy, if you wanted to come down real quickly here to expand on this a little bit, he had talked this morning about a new piece of equipment that they've gotten this year that they use in the Fourth of July parade. They were able to broadcast live, have it on, was it livestream through our setup up here and stuff like that, which I hadn't really heard about before, but I let Timothy talk about it a little bit this morning, and I'll let him just talk for a minute or so. It's kind of very interesting, I thought, and it would be worth bringing out, so...
Yeah, we're excited, actually, that we have this piece of equipment. It's pretty cool. I did ask permission from Matt if we couldn't share Town Hall Internet, similar as we do I did ask permission from Matt if we couldn't share Town Hall Internet, similar as we do for doing this meeting live. We're live tonight, hello, everybody, such that we could do the parade from downtown. The place that we normally would have gotten the internet access from to do the live broadcast wasn't going to be able to provide that for us. We had two other businesses that offered, and in testing their system, we would have completely crashed their systems by putting our equipment into it. But here at Town Hall, you have an excellent internet connection. We're able to do, even tonight, we broadcast three streams at 3,500 kilobits per second each. We're on YouTube, we're on the town livestream on the town's webpage, and we go directly to the TV studio for the live broadcast itself. And we were able to do that with the parade with a piece of equipment. It's basically a wireless MIMO system where I literally went up, I don't know that I want to tell everybody how it all works, but we were able to make a connection from downtown here that was as good as any hardwired connection would be within the building. Really pretty awesome piece of equipment for us to have, that, again, we could do, we would plan to do the Christmas Parade the same again. And then if we wanted to do a live broadcast or something from downtown or somewhere near here, we could put a big pole up or something up at the high school. The system can go up to 12 miles. Really nice piece of equipment that we were able to get this system for under, brand-new for less than $600, so... But it's a really neat thing that we could do if you guys want to do a live broadcast sometime from somewhere, you know, not, there's no internet connection right there, we can make the connection. But it certainly makes you guys look good, which is what we're out to do. Our job is to make you look good, and hopefully, we're doing that. Thank you for...
We always look good.
Yeah, thank you for all you do for us, and that was, thank you for bringing it up, Brad. But it was, again, there's so many things that we can be doing, and when an opportunity comes up that we can do that, we definitely will jump on it and make it work for you. Anything else I can say?
No, thanks, I appreciate that. I thought it was just worth bringing up, letting everybody know about it. I thought it was very interesting this morning, so, thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
More FYI.
Okay, committee reports. Linda, you want to start on that end?
I will. I went to the Chamber Board meeting, and I went to a Chamber social. The Energy Committee met, and we're working on net metering. I had a special event committee meeting, which is doing last night Wolfboro, and we're working to get sponsors and to secure entertainment. I went to the EDC, but I'll leave that up to Dave. And I went to the Infrastructure and Transportation Chapter of the Master Plan, and I'll leave that up to Brad.
David?
EDC meets once a month.
I want to bring you a microphone down, David.
The EDC meets once a month under Alan Harding. We had a very nice meeting and lasted about an hour and a half. We talked about the changing nature of Wolfboro. We've gone to, gone from wanting manufacturing and industry, which we still want, of course, but to emphasizing tourists, tourism. And then the challenge, of course, is to get more year-round tourism rather than just in the summer. The advertising budget was reviewed from Yankee Magazine. Mary DeVries said that we had 700 inquiries. Is that right, Mary? And I think from, in doing some surveying and talking around, including with Steve Durgan, who was very, quite vocal in a positive way, they've had a super-record year selling boats at Goodhue and Hawkins. And from all indications, from people taking time to get into town, the, it's a record, been a record summer. I was a little bit distressed to learn that the Inon Inn is up for sheriff sale in a couple days. It's being, it's being sold at public auction for default and the mortage. The Obistro, the restaurant, is not attached, that's a franchise in there. But they hit, that has been a facility since 1925. It started out as a cabin colony, and, but they only have like 15 or 17 rooms. The EDC had a guest visit from Mr. McClair, who's a successful Meredith entrepreneur who owns two hotels over there and a number of businesses that he sold. And he came over and talked to us about a year ago, and he said that it's almost impossible to have an inn that has fewer than 30 rooms. I asked about the new Alan A., which is a new name, whatever it's called, Governor Whitworth in or something. And that got, that has been doing very well, I was told. I also hear the Pickering House Inn is doing quite well. In fact, some friends of mine wanted to reserve there two months ago, and they were sold out. But the, and then I went to the Mount Washington, as I mentioned. But the EDC with Matt, Matt is, we're very lucky to have Matt. Matt is, keeps an eye on things and facilitates a lot of what the EDC does. And I think it's a very dynamic group at the moment and doing a lot for the town.
Okay, I had one meeting that I went to, the Ag Commission, which was pretty well-attended, I found. And they're doing pretty well with their open houses. So that's all I had, Brad.
I had a, as you just heard, we had Wolfboro Community TV meeting this morning, and just heard Timothy talk about one of the more interesting things that we had there. We're going to be working on the budget the next meeting there, so we can get it to the town for their review and everything to get into the budget process. Kind of the Master Plan Infrastructure Committee meeting last week, and I remember the date, Matt, was September 27th for the public hearing?
August 27th.
August.
Can't wait.
August. 8/27, okay, for the public hearing, for the Master Plan presentation and stuff there. And we also, if I recall, we had, it was last week, we had a workshop on the Board of Selectmen and on the roads and the maintenance and all that stuff, too, that we were all here at. So that was pretty much it for me.
Mr. O'Brien?
I went to that workshop meeting as well. That was good. Energy Committee meeting with Selectmen Murray. I've also attended a couple CIP meetings up at the Abenaki, which have been, I think, very good. The cyanobacteria education committee issued RFPs for some website activity. Those RFPs have been received, we've got six of them. We're going to boil the list down to two, and we'll be making a recommendation shortly after we figure out what the criteria needs to be and what we want to do. And the last thing, and this really is a tribute to Mr. Sullivan, this is the thank-you, Mr. Sullivan night. I attended the planning board last evening. By the way, I'm watching you on TV. Everybody out there, we want likes for you to Wolfboro Community TV. Mr. Sullivan brought the planning board together last night in a work session to have a very, very good initial but deep conversation about the consequences of all this snazzy stuff that we're starting to think about in terms of internet access and telephone service and content coming across our networks. And I give Matt a heck of a lot of kudos and the planning board as well for kind of diving into this thing as quickly as they did, as quickly as they have. And now I think that we all understand, we've got a lot of work ahead of us to kind of sort all this stuff out. But amazing progress in terms of what was done, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
I also forgot to mention, last week, we had a meeting with the Louvre Museum, the technical review committee there with Jim and stuff there. And the crux of that was to talk about getting a new set of readings on the movement of the building up there and stuff, which I believe that's happening now. I thought I came by the other day, is Meridian Construction, are people doing that?
So the floor's been stabilized. The contract was signed to get the measurements completed. We were actually able to, with the contract, to negotiate a much better price. And I believe they were going to get that executed this week. So they're moving to give us those definitive answers as to what's happening with that building as far as movement.
Okay, Town Managers report?
As Brad alluded to, on August 27th will be the wrap-up for the Master Plan meeting. I believe that's being held right here in this off, this building. Today, we actually had a meeting with New Hampshire DOT. It was a very productive meeting. We will be, in the very near future, reaching out to, as we discussed in the workshop, a Citizens Advisory Committee to work alongside with DOT on this project. So that will be forthcoming, and probably within the next month to get that going. It is a pretty aggressive schedule for that committee, once we have that launched. Received notice today, actually, that the Hazard Mitigation Plan is complete. There is one little catch to this completion. The Board of Selectmen has to adopt the plan. The plan has to be adopted before August 30th. So we have to notice a meeting for the purposes of adoption, adopting the plan. So if the Board of Selectmen could give me an idea of some dates, we can get that adopted so that the grant funds can be released and the town of Wolfboro is not on the hook for the costs associated with that project. So...
When's the earliest we could meet?
We need to, I believe, have 48 hours' notice for noticing the meeting. You know, so if, and it would be very brief. It would just be a matter of getting you guys together and adopting the plan. So I don't know if next Wednesday works for you?
We have something at 6:30, but if we did it at 5, I could do it, or 5:30.
I have a name. That works, Wednesday?
Do you do 5:30?
Wednesday at 5?
5:30.
5:30, it's fine.
Okay.
Hold my other one off.
The plan is 95 pages. The question is, do you want it sent to you electronically, or would you like to have it in paper form?
Electronic.
Soft copy.
Okay, so what I'll do is I'll have Amy reach out to you, and we'll get it, we'll get it sent out. Good news as well, Finance Department, we have hired Kathy Waldo to fill the Finance Associate position. She was the temp that was in place while Jeff Urquhart was gone. So she's already got a good understanding of some of our software and some of our practices. So she's on board, and we're moving along there.
How do you spell her name?
Waldo, W-A-L-D-O.
Her name?
Kathy with a K.
Is Waldo?
Some people may have heard that there's some spam being sent around out there with regards to looking for personal information from the town of Wolfboro. The two cases that have been brought to our office, we weren't able to get a significant amount of backup on it, but we were very concerned, so we did reach out to the Police Department to advise them. The Police Department, in turn, did do a press release on this. Basically, if there's any concerns with the public about the town reaching out to you for your contact information and you're not comfortable, please come into the town offices and have a face-to-face discussion with the people in the Billing Department as well. Please reach out to the Police Department for clarification. And lastly, some people may have noticed that the bells are not working on the clock tower. There's a broken cable up there, but we have a BAT problem in the building. So we really can't take care of repairing the cable to fix the bells until the BAT problem has been resolved. So that is actively taking place. And that kind of buttons up what I have for you this week.
Are you in charge of that?
I don't want to end a pause on a negative note for me, so...
Okay. Okay. You do everything else around it, seems like. Okay, any questions from the press? Any public input? Seeing none? Make a motion to go into non-public?
Yes.
RSA 91-A?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we're in non-public.